Okay.
Also, cool.
All right, we will call the November meeting of the Stafford Planning Board to order at 7:00 P.M. Just point out that Lucas Thordy is not here. He told me that he would be not able to make it tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I got him. Okay.
Remember Paul had a stroke?
Yeah.
First thing. First thing on the agenda is the approval of meeting minutes. We need to do September 25th meeting minutes because we didn't get them done last time. Hopefully, everybody has read this over.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes for September 25th.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that is carried. Next is the meeting minutes from October 23rd.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes for October 23rd.
I'll second.
There's just a couple of typos in here.
Which changes?
Yeah, we can change that. Mr. Schreider, Mr. Scheider, his name is spelled wrong. And it's a farm, pond, not a bond.
And I abstained because I wasn't here.
Anita abstained.
Oh, she's still. Okay. And we didn't vote on it, did we?
No, sorry, I jumped ahead a little bit.
That's fine.
We have typo there, two made. A motion was then made by the planning board.
Extra A in there.
Yeah.
I think the intent is understood.
Yeah.
Okay. So you want to reinstate your motion to approve and amend it?
I make a motion that we approve the October 23rd minutes with the corrections.
Okay, I'll second.
I'll second again.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carry. Okay, so that's. So Anita abstained. So that's carried five to zero. Paul's not here.
In the September meeting was what, six to, six to zero?
Six, six to zero, yeah.
Paul, you have some of Lucas.
Okay. All right. Under all business, the application by NYCDG Jesse Five and Six LLC for special use permit for the solar projects on Batavia Stafford Town Line Road. Just a couple of things. Won't be spending much time on that tonight. Don't believe anybody's here for that. You have all these master sets of plans and notebooks. At least you guys got the folder, you got the notebooks. I didn't get that. So you can take them now or at the end of the night. But for everybody who wanted a printed set, they're here for you. So take them home, read them over, look them over, look over the plans. We do, we have a joint meeting with the town board, a workshop meeting, on December 4th at 7:00 P.M. So anybody that can make it, that's the date we chose and accepted it, so. If you can make it, hopefully. The purpose of that really is to just clarify what our respective boards' roles are in processing the special use permit application. Who's going to be doing it? December 4th.
Seven o'clock.
Seven P.M. Yes. And I do know that the town attorney has been busy trying to find firms to do the socioeconomic analysis and trying to find a firm that can take care of the, at least the assessment part of the home value guarantee, which is part of the, part of the book of laws. So I don't know if they've, I think they found a couple of firms. I don't know what the status is on them, so we'll see. Okay. So much for that. Okay, under new business, we have an application for a special use permit by Red Oger Landmark Restaurant for a gift shop building to be installed on property at 6492 Main Road, map 10-2-74.2. The reason this is a special use permit is that the Red Oger is there as an existing non-conforming use. It was a restaurant there before town of Stafford zoning regs were established. So it's an existing non-conforming use and according to the zoning code, section... I've got all that written down. That's what happens when you leave work in a hurry. It's section 182-14, paragraph C, non-conforming uses. So that's why it's a special use permit. You should have fallen received earlier via email and tonight via paper. Layout showing where the shed is supposed to be, or is. We also have an egg data statement which looks to be in order. We also received a short environmental assessment form, part one. Steve, you want to just give us a brief explanation?
So it's the same gift shop that was up at the welding shop, or welding shop. We just figured we're at the restaurant 24/7. Why not take it down to the restaurant? We have the guests coming in anyway, so that's pretty much. And it's on the east side of the restaurant, so there's a walkway. And it's right on the other side of the walkway. It goes into my parents' lawn a little bit, but they don't care, so.
Well, it's all one parcel though.
One parcel, yeah.
Was there a driveway at one time?
I think they did use it as a driveway. I don't know how they never hit the moment, to be honest with you, but. It's a very narrow driveway.
How, how big is the actual shed?
I believe thirty by twenty-eight, maybe?
This thing says ten by twenty-five.
Yeah, it's not twenty-eight.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Ten by twenty-five.
Yeah, that's not twenty.
Ten by twenty, ten by twenty-five.
Twenty-five just seems long compared to what I saw.
It is, it is long.
It is long. It's not very wide.
Yeah, I think the ten foot's probably correct.
Yeah.
I just wasn't sure about the length of it.
Yeah, it's definitely twenty-five foot long as well.
Okay. This is something that we do have to send up to county planning for their comment.
Are there still parking spots in front?
Yes.
I think yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I already know just three.
It is four, it is four, yeah.
Now, those used to be designated as handicap spots.
Yeah, they are.
So they are.
Yeah.
So, because one concern that I have, not as a planning board chairman, but as a resident, is the site distance to the west is terrible when you come up off Roanoke Road to begin with. And if you're going to have a gift shop there and people are going to be parking between the curb and the road, it blocks site distance.
They shouldn't be parked, they should be parking in the main parking lot and walking over it, really. That's because mainly open during dinner service, so the dinner guests aren't really going to be walking over there.
There was somebody over there in the middle of the afternoon, day before yesterday.
Yeah.
Walking around trying to figure out what is the gift shop.
It's only open during business hours, so, for the most part.
But people can't park there because the people who are parked in the handicap won't be able to get out.
Yeah.
If there's a car parked between the building and the.
Not the, there's a, there's a curb.
On the side of the road.
There's a curb. There's a curb on the roadside of where the, where the handicap parking.
Oh, parked on the roadside of the curb.
So if they park on the roadside of the curb.
I think unfortunately, you're always going to have that because even with people to go.
You can't, you can't. The park gets really bad.
Instead of parking in the parking lot, they always park on that.
Something you might want to think about if they come up with a way to.
They put no parking sign.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
You could put cones out like the church does on Main Street.
Yeah, that might be an option.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Put cones out. Put cones out when you're, when you're, when you're open, when the gift shop is open, so people aren't parking there.
So the concern is that people park there and you can't see when they're, when they're coming out.
You can't see coming off of Roanoke Road.
Yeah.
When you're trying, either, you know, I mean, if you're, you're looking to the west to see upcoming traffic and you can't see anything. It's bad enough when there's nothing there.
But on the public road though, right? It's on, it's the state highway.
That's the state highway, yeah, which I, that might be an issue too, so.
Yeah, I guess I don't know if he can.
Something that you might want to explore with them, see if there's something.
I think the cone idea, no parking, just put cones up when you're out there. Block off that one parking lot so they can't even get in there. They have to go around.
Yeah, it is tough to get out of your parking lot.
Yeah.
You're a media.
Well, I always leave when people are home.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, they, there's four things that we have to, that we have to meet, or that you have to meet for enlarging the, the non-conforming use. And that is that the enlargement is in connection with the same business. So if there's any way you can give us a little write-up or something, kind of how it's connected, I mean, other than the same people own the same thing.
Okay.
If there's some way you can tie it in with the Red Oger Landmark Restaurant and some of the gifts you're selling or.
Yeah, where you have like promotional t-shirts and cups and all that stuff in there, so.
So that would be good. And I think the others, the other three, the enlargement is on the same lot occupied by the use at the effective date of this chapter, which it is. The enlargement does not create a greater deviation from the standards contained in this chapter, which, you know, your front setback is the same as what the restaurant is. You're well within side setbacks and everything else, so it is a little strange because the house on the other side, but.
Yeah.
And then such other conditions as may be deemed appropriate by the planning board, so. Which we haven't set any conditions yet, but. So if we have to send this to county planning, we have to get it there by... I have data here someplace.
Right here.
December, we have to get it to them by December 5th.
Yeah, and they act on it December 12th.
So before, like maybe by December 2nd or 3rd, if you could just get a, like do a brief write-up of what you're doing in there, what you're selling, tie it into the Red Oger Landmark Restaurant, so you can kind of, you know, make it of the same type. Obviously, you're not serving dinners in there, and we understand that. But, and then I can get the application ready and we can send it to the county. Their meeting is on the 12th.
12th.
Yeah, the second Thursday, December.
December 12th.
And it's usually a pretty good, it's usually a pretty good idea to go to the meeting, just in case there's any questions. And they will, they'll say, yeah, they'll make advanced contact with it, so you'll know about it.
What time, the 12th, do you, we have a time typically?
They'll tell you on the postcard.
Okay.
But it's, it's usually.
And they take you in order that you arrive, so.
Yeah, so it's usually good to get there a little bit early because, yeah, they take you first come, first served, so. So if it's a long agenda and you walk in late, you might be sitting there for a while.
I will be there early.
Okay, do we have enough information here to, with the write-up from Steve to schedule a public hearing?
Yeah, what about the question of parking, like you said, on county highways? Is there anything he needs to know beforehand or reach out to anyone?
They just put up in the write-up that we're going, that will block off that drive?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, or, or, you know, put cones out in front. Until state highway department tells you you can't do that, I guess that's a pretty reasonable thing to do. If you've had, if you had the chance to check with the guy up at the state highway department, up at the top of the hill there, he can, he may be able to give you some guidelines too.
Well, we could block it off right where our driveway is, so you're not even going down the main roadway. It'll be just blocking our driveway off, so people can't even get in there. So they would have to be forced to go into our parking lot. It'd probably be the easiest way.
Well, my concern is the people parking on the, right on the shoulder of the road. I mean, I think where your, where your handicap parking is right now is fine. I mean, I don't see any reason to.
I would, we should probably just have them put up no parking in front of that curb. Because like I said, they, the to-go orders, they always park right there where there's no need, like they actually come in the driveway.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that would be good. So you can mention that in the write-up, that would be very beneficial. So with that.
There may have been at one point in time, because they have, the state does have the things in the ground for right there. So there could have been no parking there at one point in time, like, not in my time there, but there could have been.
I don't, yeah, I don't know. I've been here a while and I don't remember, no. I thought I had something in the back of my mind that there was at one time.
I feel like they could have been, because those things are in the ground right there. I don't think it'd be nothing for them to put up two no parking on each side of that.
Yeah. Okay. Are you going to look into that then, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Do we have to have a motion to go to county?
All right.
Do we have to have a motion to go to county?
Uh, we can.
I move that we move this application to the county.
And I second it.
And we schedule a public hearing at our next board meeting.
I like that, two for one.
Which would be December 18th. Did you get the second part of my motion? We're sending it to county and scheduling a public hearing.
Yeah.
On the 18th of December.
At 7:00 P.M. Do we have a second on that?
I need a.
Anita, second it. Okay.
Who first?
Me.
Sharon.
Sharon.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that is carried six zero. All right, so if you can get that, just, if you can get that to the town.
If they want to put it up the side, in the meantime, should I just let them go for it and do it?
Sure.
It's not going to hurt anything. I mean, it's better for us and there's no accidents or anything like that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's not a problem.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Because I always wonder, why do you park there? You can literally just go that way or, or the other way. But I know question, they're coming in and getting to theirs, so what am I going to do?
Yeah, right.
Some people just don't think, you know.
Yeah, it's so dangerous to park there.
Yeah.
That area is always dangerous too, you know, you hear.
It's dangerous.
And they might be better to come that way.
Dangerous when you just don't walk up there in the summertime.
Especially in the winter time when there's going to be plowing and wind.
Yeah.
And snow.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Is that, I'm probably sure they're ahead of us.
We don't, we don't have that, do we?
Sometimes.
Maybe tomorrow.
I remember 50 years ago, we had snow.
If it doesn't snow by midnight tonight, we've broken the record forever in the north for not having snow.
Here?
Before, yeah, before midnight.
Wow.
What's that, the snow here?
Yes, but that's what I'm saying.
December 2nd.
Oh, really? Oh, that quickly? Okay.
Two weeks, almost two weeks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My kids love that.
Yeah, they're out putting the lights up right now.
Oh, I see.
I'm pretending like it's not happening.
Doesn't feel like it should be out.
And the lights are looking good.
Yeah, they're getting back.
Looking pretty good.
I got asked this morning if I was going to help. I'm like, no, I got to run the restaurant, sorry.
Cut my job, man.
All righty, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get over to you, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. All right.
We were telling about pulling all that driveway.
Yeah.
We were talking before, like, stolen living in front, pulled that side, so.
Okay. Right, so keep losing for some reason. Okay.
No public hearing for that bill or anything like that?
Yes.
Oh, yes, we said public hearing, December 18th. I thought you wrote that down.
No, I didn't write that down.
At seven o'clock.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
I got it.
All right. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
I'll be over to you in a second. Yep. Get it over fast.
It's all these things sitting in front of me. Okay. Hi, Dave.
Great.
Good timing. Okay, we have application by C.E. Cracker for a special use permit slash site plan approval for a storage barn to be constructed on their property at 8610 Route 237, map parcel 6-1-42.211. Should have all gotten a copy of the application, plan. So Dave, you want to just give us a brief explanation of what you're planning on doing here?
Building an eighty by one forty building.
Okay. And what's it going to be used for? What are you going to?
Dry fertilizer.
Pardon?
Dry fertilizer.
Dry fertilizer? Okay.
And didn't you just put up a building a couple of years ago?
Yes.
For the same reason?
No.
Oh, what was that for?
Storage.
Storage of what?
Of equipment.
Okay.
Equipment part, I think, yeah. That's this one down here.
Yeah, that's all.
Thank you.
Could ring another. Okay. The. That doesn't show. You know how far that is supposed to be from the, that old metal storage building that you have up there? Building number eight is, what is it labeled on there?
How far from it?
Yeah.
I believe it's 10 foot.
10 feet, okay. Somebody here can see this, okay. So we're, are the doors going to be at the ends or in the middle?
The doors will be to the, uh, north.
To the north, okay. So you'll have trucks coming in off of Bartoff Road to, for loading and unloading?
I know, we usually don't use that. We usually use that as an exit when we're busy, but.
Oh, okay, okay.
Most of them will have to come in the front.
So they'll come off of 237?
They have to get on the truck scale and get weighed.
Okay. So they'll come in off of 237 and then come up around and, okay. Any estimate of, I mean, I don't know, I haven't got any idea how you load or unload that stuff, but how many truckloads a day or a week or?
Well, the rail is different all the time. I mean, you'd probably unload one rail car with four loads, but that gives you an idea.
Okay.
The question should be tied, right?
Pardon?
How much tonnage?
How much tonnage per day or per week are you looking at?
It's different all the time with.
Average.
Let's say 200 ton.
Per day?
How much?
200 ton.
How many tons per truck?
A truck can hold 30.
It's seven trucks. It's seven trucks. Okay, so they'd be coming in off of 237.
Sorry.
So they'd be coming in off of 237. Someplace there, there's the entrance. They'd be coming around here. Are there anything special you're going to do with the parking that you have there now? Where that building is? I mean, I, this is a aerial that, I think this is Google Map, actually. You've got a bunch of parking, not sure what that is, tankers or different things like that? Is that, it looks like it's pretty, you can come up and look at this, you know. I think this was taken off of a Google Map aerial. I'm just curious, because the building, building's going to go right behind this one, right?
Right beside it.
Yeah, right here.
Yep.
So it's probably going to take up a bunch of this stuff.
Plenty of parking.
So any thoughts about what would happen with that stuff? I mean, would it move over here?
Plenty of land for parking.
Okay. Well, I just, I guess I'm just trying to make sure that it's not, you know, I'm trying to find out where you intend to put this stuff. Maybe it's transient, so it just goes wherever you've got space.
Yeah, I mean, we have 32 acres there, so.
Okay.
Paint though. Are we over acres? Or is that not a question?
I don't know.
Eleven thousand two hundred square feet.
I looked at, this is the map out of the drainage study that was done back in 2015. And the, it shows, there's that barn, so this would be in back of here. So it looks like some of the barn would be in this drainage area that would go down this way. Some will be in the drainage area that would go that way, from what I can tell. I think it's pretty flat in that, in that area, isn't it, Dave?
Yeah. You should have our topographical map that we had to do for. You should have our topographical map that we had to do for some other reason. So you should be able to know where the water drains.
Yeah, that's what we're just looking at. So as far as the change in, in impervious area, I don't, I don't know.
It's not really changing anything.
It's not as significant, yeah, it's not really changing because it's already, it's already considered a pavement.
Is it sealed or is it loose?
What's that?
Loose, okay.
The gravel, right?
No, the, um, not the gravel, I know that, the fertilizer.
Oh, I know.
Is it sealed, in sealed packages, drums, barrels, containers?
It's bulk.
Or is it just loose, like?
It's bulk, random everywhere.
Okay. So it's loose.
Okay. Well, this is. I spoke with the town attorney about this, because there's been some confusion in the past as to. You know, is this a modification of the special use permit, is it site plan? And I don't wanna speak for him, but I guess I am. He said that he thought that it would be appropriate, since the special use permit was issued for the use. That it would be appropriate for this to review it as a site plan. It's not the same situation that we have with the red oge, because that's automatically has to be a special use permit.
I have a question, like the fine print on here. Is this a stone base or an incident base? I can't read that. The base of the barn gonna be a solid floor, like cement?
Concrete, yeah.
Concrete, okay.
Okay. I guess I don't understand, okay. It comes in on a truck, it's loose. When they dump it?
Comes in on a rail car down in Leroy, next to Bubba's Rail. You know where Bubba's is?
Uh-huh.
Okay, we have a rail siding there.
Okay.
Comes in rail cars, unloaded out of the conveyor into the truck.
Okay.
And the truck comes there and loads into the building.
So it, it's just dumped loose into the building?
No, it's.
No.
You have to pile it.
It doesn't leave a truck into the building.
It leaves the truck from the conveyor belt, just.
Into the building.
Into the building, so it's, it's all loose, it just gets dropped in there.
Yeah, it leaves the building, it goes.
So it's contained, but it's loose?
Yes.
It's loose inside the building.
You know what a salt barn is?
And that's what I'm trying to get at, it's, it's loose, you're putting it in the building loose.
Yeah.
It's not.
It's not in a container.
It's not in any kind of a container in, that's in the building.
Nineteen sixties, they don't do bags anymore.
That's why I was asking if it was a solid, it was ground, so there's no chance of.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the exact same thing we're doing now, been doing for thirty years.
Okay, so a couple of things, I think we need to send a copy of the plan over to the fire department. Have them review, look at it. Just to make sure they don't have any issues, especially since we're, we're starting a dry fertilizer.
What is the actual fertilizer, by the way?
I'm sorry?
What is the fertilizer, by the way? Is it nitric?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Is it nitric?
What kind of fertilizer? It's urea. All urea, totally. It's a dry, it's a dry formula.
Just straight urea?
Yeah.
Okay, not, no other additives? Okay.
Okay. So I think we need to, they need to send us to the county because of its presence on Route two thirty-seven. And I think, it's my opinion anyways, that we should have a public hearing on this. It's the board's discretion, but I think it's appropriate to have a, a public hearing on this. We have to wait for the county response to get back anyways, before we could take any action, so. I guess we could maintain, do a motion of scheduling, sending this to the county.
Yes.
Lindsey's making the motion. Bill's, Bill's gonna say it, though.
Sending, sending the application to county planning for review. And scheduling a public hearing for December eighteenth. Let's say seven thirty.
Okay.
Did we refine to the other two, what's the reason?
Seven.
Excuse me, sir.
Does that work?
I'm.
Yes, sir.
I, I represent the Princes, and I was wondering if I could be heard on the question of whether this is a special use or simply a site plan review?
Sure.
I think looking at the zoning code, it's very clear that, that constructing a warehouse facility on a zoned agricultural residential plot requires a special use permit for that, that construction. And so I would urge the board to interpret this as it is on its face, as, you know, it says right there front and center, it's a special use permit.
We have a special use permit.
There's no special use permit for this warehouse that's going on.
You don't need one, it's for the property.
The application's called a special use, they're asking for a special use permit.
They don't have one.
It should be into, well, the same.
Let him finish his speech, please.
The application goes into the, the building department, the application, the building department's satisfied, they, they could just say, oh, you don't need a special use permit. The application says special use permit, that should be the standard that governs this, this proceeding and ultimately governs the standard that's set at the, at the ultimate public hearing.
Okay. Could you give me that in writing, so I can pass that on to our town attorney, because he seems to have a difference of opinion on that. And unfortunately, he's not here.
Absolutely.
But if you could send me that in writing, I can pass that on to him.
Okay.
Send it to the town, to the town clerk.
What's the best way to get it to you?
Town, town, uh, town clerk at townstafford dot org.
Is this where you're applying to for the application?
Yes.
Is that, that's what I thought.
Yeah. That's why I talked to him about it, yeah.
And any further comment the Princes will have will be reserved until the public hearing, but we, we hope that it is considered enough, under the public, or the special use standard.
Okay.
Thank you.
We, that brought up.
I'm, I'm not a legal person, so I'm not gonna offer, you know.
I understand, I'm happy to follow up.
An argument one way or the other, I just wanna do what, you know, what's the right way to do it, so.
So I have a question, since he brought up some legal concerns. Should we postpone everything until we hear back? Do you think you'd hear back from the attorney and the county prior to?
We should hear back in plenty of time, right?
Okay. I just didn't wanna have him go, oh, okay, we gotta change it after this minute.
Our town attorney's very, very active.
If, um.
That's what we've had in years.
Yep, you're right.
Yeah, if, you know, as soon as he gets the, as soon as we get the information from you. Barb will send it over to David, and he can copy me on it, and then I'll make sure to bug Dave to get a response. And then we'll either advertise it as a, you know. It's gonna be a public hearing one way or another, whether it's a site plan or a special use permit. I know you're, there's slight variations in what your requirements are and what conditions you have to meet for a special use permit versus a site plan, so I understand where you're, where you're coming from.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on that before we?
We didn't have a second, did we?
I'll, I'll second. Elsie made the motion, Carol second.
This is to send the site plan to the county and to have a public hearing for December eighteenth.
Yes, seven thirty. Okay. Okay, any other discussion on that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Carried six zero. Okay.
Aren't you the guy that said we can bring all our used tires over to your place?
I'm sorry?
Aren't you the guy that said a couple of years ago, we can bring all our used tires over?
No.
See, I remember some of the stuff, just not.
Quite a memory, I don't remember that either.
He laughed, so he remembers.
We do have a short environmental assessment form, I think at this point, we can.
You're all done with me.
Doing anything on that until we, until we have the hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions with Dave?
Nope.
Does the environmental assessment concern this application?
Yes.
Do we, do we have a copy of that? Or is there a way, is there a place that we can find that in the clerk's office, or?
Did you post this?
I did, I posted.
Here, you can.
Yeah, we can, we can get your.
In that line, I have two copies.
Oh, okay. There you go. Quick friendly service.
Thank you very much.
Do you want the agricultural data statement?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Alright. So if there's no other questions for Mr. Carroll, I guess you're all set on for now.
Thank you.
Thank you. You too. There's the address, I know, I had one here someplace, but I don't find it. Okay. Yeah. Somewhere in this mess, right? Cause I got meeting minutes in here. All sorts of stuff.
Hold on, you guys want to just paper it down right now?
Thank you. I'll put that in our table. Okay. Other items that we have, just very briefly. We got a copy of our approved budget, and the planning board was approved for the amount requested. So. We all should be happy about that. That's from, yeah, we're, we're over that one.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Um. You should've all got your notice about the Christmas lunch.
Yep.
Uh, the same day that we have our meeting with the town board, so hopefully they don't get stuffed with all those cookies and everything. So let the town clerk know if you're able to attend as soon as you can. Anybody need a copy of this?
I think we all got one.
They were in our mailboxes.
Okay. I know something you don't have. Is, well, this is a draft. Of next year's meetings and application deadlines. Yeah, I like to spread disease that way. It's pretty similar to this year's. You know, we have, it's the fourth Wednesday of the month. Except for November and December, we're getting a date earlier again, November nineteenth this time is the twentieth, and December seventeenth is the eighteenth. So. If we had it the regular meeting night, we would be meeting on Christmas Eve. And I know you all wanna bring me presents, but. So if that looks, if that looks okay, we can. We can approve it.
I make a motion that we approve it as written.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Carried. So. I will take off the draft and get you official copies for next month.
Are you gonna do anything for Christmas this year? Since we have so many public hearings?
Oh, that's great. Want to push it off to January?
Well, that's up to you, what you wanna do. You know, we got Genesee five and six coming up too, so.
We got lots of.
This may be on the agenda for.
We need to do something for his last time.
When's his last time?
He is stepping down and Barb is taking over.
Is today his last one?
No, he stays to the end of the, the year.
Okay.
One more.
Yeah.
See, she steals all my things.
Oh.
So we, so we, so we got one last item to talk about tonight.
Well, wait, before you do that, we just got, um, maybe you were gonna say this. I just got an email that they're having, you, uh, Planning Federation, is that the right planning? They sent out an email saying that if you don't have all your credits. All the credits, that you could send it back by, send back an email to them by December something, and they will send you a lead to the courses. And then you tell them to donate, I'll send you your certificate for the end of the year.
I think we've all done, involved.
I think we have. I have a feeling that we have totally exhausted our educational training for probably the next, some of us for the next decade.
I, I was gonna say during COVID. It seems like I took a class every day.
I know, I went to my job.
Well, for you, yeah.
I think you're, I, the bookkeeper's handling it.
So just saying it's mercy?
So, anyways. I'll let you guys read that and pass it on, but Walt is resigning effective the end of the year.
Yep.
You read first.
We'll miss you.
Will happily listen.
You've done a good job over the years.
Thank you.
Feel free to, could still come to the meetings every Wednesday of the month.
Yeah, we're situated, you know, transitional these rules. We've talked about a lot of things already, you know, so. I told her, I says, these are two good boards to work with, it's a zoning board and a planning board. That's the truth when I say that, you guys have been great to work with. So has Mike Lathan and the zoning people, so. It's a good, it's a good scenario.
So. Somebody like to make a motion to accept his resignation?
I'm not making that motion. I, I'm not, I can't do that.
Do you have to?
I know you do deserve to retire, but.
I don't know. It's, it's officially an appointment of the town board. We don't have anything to do with it, really. So we don't need to make, we can make a motion congratulating Walt on his upcoming retirement from the town of Stafford duties.
So moved.
And I'll second it.
Now we just gotta get it and get it in a little frame. Now, we, we appreciate all the efforts you've put in over the years.
I'll back.
Mercy.
Oh, nice.
That was a day after.
But we appreciate all the time you put in for us, Walt.
Well, you know, I was gonna say, we talked about this at the zoning meeting the other day. Mike Lathan made a good point, you know, and technically, I think, sometimes the board members should, town board members should attend some of these meetings. And Mike was complimenting me on the fact that I was the only go-between.
Yes.
That all three boards had, now Barb's gonna assume that position too.
It's a lot of responsibility, chick. It's a lot of responsibility, chick, I hope I can do it.
I got a lot of goods to work.
That was positive.
No.
That was a positive. I didn't think you'd ever get all the town board members to come to the meetings, you know, and all that.
They're busy and they got meetings too.
Sometimes questions come up, the concerns, what went on at the planning board and zoning board. Sometimes I can speak to them.
Are you going to...
Great.
Yeah.
We'll miss you.
Yeah.
Definitely.
That's the only thing that's gone right lately.
Won't be the same here without you.
Walt, how old are you?
He put the stakes...
Won't be the same here without you.
Well, I'll, I'll come down and rattle your case then. I just...
How old are you?
Seventy-eight. You know, I just, my hearing is really getting bad and I can't understand what you guys are saying. I can't bring my wife to the meetings and tell her what you just said, you know.
I always do that for my husband.
Whenever I have to go to the doctor or something, make sure I take her with me because she, I says, what did he just say? What kind of medicine is that, you know?
Bob calls me a support person.
So, I was fortunate to find that girl in Stafford here. I started off growing up in Darien and going to school in Alexander. Never in my wildest dreams did I expect to be town clerk in Stafford. When I told my mother that, she says, you're gonna what? Cause she was town clerk in Darien for 25 years. So I said, following in your footsteps now.
Are you still doing the bees? Are you still doing the bees?
Doing what?
The bees.
Your honey, there's the honey.
Yeah, my bees didn't make it, I think, through the early part of the winter, so I have to get another start next spring. But I have lots of honey though. I, I've got like 70 of those pipe bottles or half pipe bottles.
Why don't you sell them?
Because I like to give them away to my friends.
Okay.
People do me favors and stuff.
The Christmas party is on the 18th.
I, I, it's an unusual gift, Christmas time is long and I give people things. Kids came over and blew the driveway out with the leaves the other day, you know, and I said, here, take a vial of honey over your folks, you know.
They do the work and the folks give the honey.
Yeah, well...
That's what they're saying.
That's true.
That's the American way.
Yeah.
That's true.
Okay, does, do we have anything else? Gene, anything new you wanna report to us on?
Next court date's the 19th.
Offer, offer here?
Yeah.
Okay.
December 19th?
Yep.
Do you know what time?
It's always in the paper, isn't it, this one today?
Well, it's always at Genesee County Supreme Court in Matega, and 10:30, I think.
Okay.
He found a lawyer that would believe him.
Yes.
That's amazing. That he found somebody that believes him.
We also have a lawyer that I talk to frequently and has told the other lawyer that we shouldn't be trying this case in the public forum that's been in court and that's where it should stay.
Sure. And he's right.
Yeah.
He's right.
I have a question.
But unfortunately, Jake Spatillo brought it out in the public.
We got forced into this by Mr. Ponte.
The Roberts Rule of Order would have shut down that meeting right away because they weren't on the agenda.
What meeting?
The one where he kept going, but I know what you're talking about.
Oh, the town meeting, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get this, I'm, I'm just trying to get this meeting shot.
I'll have a motion, I want the meeting.
Okay, we have motion by Anita, adjourned.
Oh, adjourned.
And we have a second by Sharon. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Carrie, we are adjourned at 7:55.
I have one question, why was it...